Of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as I ask for a moment of silence. Past member of Engine Two, Charles Lee Clark. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Roll.
Alderman Toobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey. President Rodriguez.
Here.
For Miss President.
Approval of minutes?
We have the minutes from December 20th, 2022.
We have motion to approve. Alderman Green, second to by. Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, I would like the mayor to come up. Put it here. Here? You want to do both of us together?
Yeah.
Go ahead, microphone.
Hey, we'll do it over here, right?
All right, we have a busy place tonight, and well deserved. We have the Super Bowl champions with us tonight. We want to offer our congratulations and let you all know how proud we are as a city that your program has excelled for many, many years. And, you know, the, this board and the previous board, we have been very supportive because of the great work you've been doing, the parents and the volunteers, and especially the players, where we have constructed Wall Slayer Field in your honor for your use and to grow that league and to make sure you have facilities. And before the field is even permanently dedicated, you guys brought us home a Super Bowl championship. So we want to say thank you. So tonight, we're going to present each member a certificate along with a $10,000 check. That's only a joke. Andrew said he played on the team, too. But we're going to present a certificate of recognition for each member to say thank you for your hard work throughout the year and congratulations for a job well done. So we'll call up individually, as you get up, if you can just stand up here so then we can take a group picture and post it on all our social media so we can let our whole community know how proud we are of the hard work that you've done. And so we'll start with Mason Reynolds. Oh, you're going to stay up here, too? You're the coach, right?
Yeah.
Yep, you let me know who's not here. Next is Yanni Lawrence. Carter Lewis. Raymond Gray. Next is Owen McZorn. Jacob Price. True Myers. Suprel Roman. Elijah Brown. Jacob Carey. Liam Flynn. Matthew DeGroot. Paul Stewart Jr. Ethan Arundel. Jonah Batista. Xander Robinson. And Corey Royal. Maria, is Maria there with, not the camera? Oh, there she is. Yeah, get the coaches up here, too. You guys want to, you want to introduce, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, so my name is Maurice Lewis. I was the head coach, unfortunately, this year with the youth football. A lot of these young guys up here, it was their first year ever playing in the sport. They got signed up and they got into the contact of football. And a lot of people didn't believe that they can get this far. Mind you, they did not only win the Super Bowl, but they went undefeated winning the Super Bowl. And that's, and that's big. The only team in Middletown that did that. And just for the record for the youth, it starts here with the kids, you know? We, Middletown supports the sports big time, especially with football. And it starts right here with these young ones. So if you know anybody or if you got any young ones that want to sign up, I think it's been advertised and posted for the, registered for this year. It's posted on the website as well, I believe. Look into it. Sign the kids up, because this is where it starts. All right, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
There's a blank one here, maybe it fell out. He's on the roster? There's a blank, yeah. Uh-oh, we messed somebody up. We'll get, we'll get you one. Where is he?
He's not here today.
Oh, he's not here? Okay, we'll make sure we get him one then.
Appreciate it. Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take a couple minute break while they, yeah.
We're going to take a break. All right, for the good of the city, anyone else would like to address the council, please step forward.
I got a little bit of a mystery is, and I talked to Alex Smith, your counsel. He didn't have an answer for me, so he told me to come here and said, you guys are probably straightening things out for me. So this is the deal. I have a two-family house in Middletown, and I don't live there. And I had the inspector, six though, I think Martinez, he went through. And it's a three-bedroom, and it's a couple, but there's another guy, he's not related, and he lives in the other bedroom. And, you know, and he even like gave me the law that it pertains to, but basically what it says is, if you're renting an apartment, you can't have a non-related person living in that apartment. That's kind of like the law says. And I told him, I said, you know, that doesn't make sense. Like suppose, suppose you get a couple that's not married, they're not related, and they're living, like why is, why is that okay? And, or like I told him, like that 98 Fiancee show, I said, if they're in the apartment in Middletown, they can't do it because you got two unrelated people living in, you know, renting an apartment. And he kind of agreed with me. He goes, you know what, it doesn't make sense to me either. But he goes, it's the law. Like I'm here to enforce the law, so it's not up to me to decide it makes sense. You know, and I agree with it. That's not his, not his thing. So then I contacted, you have like a website, and I just thought I'd contact another inspector, Walt Welch, and he never got back to me, so I guess he doesn't have an answer either. Then I contacted your, the lawyer, Alex Smith, and he wasn't, he didn't really know. He said, like, you know, why don't you come here? So, so I'm here. And, because I know, I know a couple that lives in Middletown, they're not married, they have an apartment, you know, together, and they never got challenged, you know? It's, it's, it's kind of a funny, funny law. I think, I think even if you rent an apartment, you should be allowed to have like one unrelated person. And by related, it means, you know, parents, kids, or siblings, no cousins or anything like that.
What's the address of the property?
It's 413 North Street.
413 North Street. And I guess you're the landlord?
Yes.
And it's a two-family?
Yes.
So if you have a lease, they don't have to be married or, or related. So if they're there, if, if me and Rick want to be roommates and we both are, we're both on a lease, it's, that's legal. But it sounds like you're like trying to rent a room, if the person comes in and the person comes back. That's not allowed.
Okay, that's kind of the explanation I was looking for, okay. So, okay, I run the whole thing like really like loosey-goosey, and I have like no written agreements with anybody. But, but basically, if you're saying, if I signed up a lease with everybody's name on it, then it's legit?
So it depends on, on the city, when the city inspectors, they come out, you have to do a rental permit, they have to do the inspection, they'll ask for a copy of the lease, and they'll say, who's on the lease? Me and Rick are one apartment, this one is on this apartment, and that's it. And if we move out, you got to report to the city again that you, you have a vacancy and, and you need a rental permit.
Who collects the rent from the person?
I do.
Well, you're, you're, you're running a boarding house, then. And that's the problem.
Okay.
So the case, the case that you presented is not entirely accurate, where if me and a friend rent an apartment and we're unrelated, that's not what the code says. The code says is that you're renting an apartment to two separate people. You're renting, you're, and you're collecting rent from two separate people, so that, that's your issue.
Okay, so if I just collected from one person and I have an agreement that has all their names on it, then it's okay?
You still can potentially have some problems with how you're operating it, but I can't give you a legal advice at this meeting, but, but the, the question that you answered is the driver for the code enforcement, because you're collecting rent from two separate individuals. And so the, the code doesn't say you can't, that people have to be married to live together or related to live together. But the code is specific to avoid people creating boarding houses and collecting rent from separate individuals.
Okay, because it says borders are not permitted in two-family dwellings, which makes him a border, and what you're saying is?
But he's not a border, he's, he's your tenant. You have two separate tenants, so.
You know, I actually wanted to just collect the rent once and they combine their money.
Well.
It's like become like a, you know, but I could do that. I could just tell them, hey, this is the deal.
Yeah, there's, there's ways of doing it correctly, but I can't give you that advice at the meeting here. I don't know, I don't, I don't, I have to read the whole law and, but, but the, once you answer the question that you're collecting from both individually, you're, you're basically running a boarding house, and that's prohibited.
Okay.
All right?
So who do I contact to restructure it so it's like proper?
Well, first thing I'm going to do, I'm going to have a conversation with Mr. Smith, why he would not let us know what was happening, coming to the meeting and getting blindsided. So I'll have that conversation with him tomorrow and see if there's more details that I'm missing here. So we'll, we'll get back. If you want to call and leave your, or leave your number, name a number with the clerk, I'm sure we'll be able to get back to you, okay?
Okay, all right.
All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else would like to address the council? Okay, Martha the mayor?
Want to thank you for the moment of silence. Charlie Clark is my father-in-law. And Charlie spent many years as a member of the Eagles and Middletown Fire Department, and I'm sure his family thanks you for, for the moment of silence. Also, on other news, the, tonight you have in front of you, and it has to be passed tonight, by all three municipal boards before, and then plus the Orange County, so make four, four legislative bodies, the sales tax sharing agreement. The agreement is expired, effective February 28th. And it takes a while to get it processed through the controller's office, and there are deadlines that have to be met. This agreement, if you recall, for the last few years, during the census count, that we, every meeting, we had slides up asking the people to fill out their census forms, to make sure they respond, that it matters to city taxpayers, that every person that possible be counted. Well, for the next 10 years, we will now, we have flipped the sales tax formula, where Middletown was once a point or so, point and a half behind Newburgh, City of Newburgh on population, we have now flipped it the other way. We are now two points in front of Newburgh on population. And I don't mean that as a competition, I mean that as a, as a matter of fact, where the sales tax agreement that you're adopting tonight will continue the process of, the cities, towns, and villages in Orange County share about 26% plus of sales tax collected from all different businesses and utilities within the county. Of that 26% plus, 32% plus is shared with the three cities. And by, you may ask, for those who have not been around for a while, are not familiar with it, is the reason why there's a, the contract is between the county and the three cities, because the three cities are the ones that have a legal right to preempt the county on sales tax. So in order to avoid this battle over this distribution of money, we have, for the past 25 or so years, have had this agreement in place, and it's worked for all involved. The towns and villages are a benefactor of the, of the contract, and for no other reason other than they have representation in the county legislature also, and, and the right thing for the county to also include them in the sharing agreement. So we are now going to pick up, in the next calendar year, approximately $500,000 to the good for Middletown taxpayers, based on all the work that was done during the census. I want to thank Maria and Caitlin from Economic Development, especially Caitlin, who took the ball by the horns, and she really attended a lot of the meetings. Maria, I know, also did a lot, meeting with different groups and all the organizations that we worked with, trying to get people counted, and all of the hard work that was done even by members of the board, who we asked to make sure that your neighborhoods were, people were aware, that not only is the census the right thing to do, but it was the right thing to do for the city and for them as taxpayers. So we're hoping for a vote tonight, it will then be sent on to the other two cities for their signature, and then forwarded to the county for a vote in early February. And that's all I have this evening. Any questions?
Any questions for the mayor? All right, thank you, mayor.
You have one.
Alderman Johnson.
Not related to this, and I don't want to blindside you, Mr. Mayor, but Alderman Witt had communicated with Alderwoman Ray and myself, that at the Parks Commission, they were talking about the plans for the water attraction at Maple Hill, and we have discussed with you a couple of times in the last year or so about a survey. How should, what do you envision, how should we proceed? Is there anything that might happen in 2023?
Well, I, I think the discussions that we had were more for the two of you, the third ward, to do some type of survey in that neighborhood, to see what they would like there. They, they might like the peace and quiet that's come with the closure of the pool, and we can then put some resources into expanding the Davage Park area. But there's also been discussion of a, of a, what do you call it, not a pool there, a sprinkle, splash, splash pad, which is more geared towards little kids, and since the facilities are there, and it would be much cheaper. A new pool will probably run us in the area, I don't, I'm only going by what Newburgh is paying, and it's a much larger pool, grant you, but Newburgh's paying over 14 million for their pool. And they're using ARPA funds. Now, we would not be paying that kind of money here, but I guarantee you that it'd be in the two to three million dollar range if we were going to replace Maple Hill. But with our problems with lifeguards and the users, the primary users of the pools now are, are young kids, and they seem to be enjoying the splash pad, so. But we would defer to you and Kate for the, for some guidance, and if you wanted to do a Survey Monkey through citywide, we certainly can do that also. But I think the, the immediate feedback should come from that neighborhood and see what their, see what their opinions are, because it is right across the street from the residential area. It's not like Davage where it's somewhat isolated, it's, it's adjacent to a residential area.
We'll confer and proceed, figure out how to proceed with the survey. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Reports of departments, Economic Development?
Good evening, everyone. The office has been working on annual meetings for the bid district, this Community Development Agency, the IDA, submission of the action plan, and submission also the Restore New York Grant regarding the ONW. So all those good things have been happening past couple weeks as we start off 2023. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for Maria? All right, thank you, Maria. DBW Commissioner?
Good evening. I want to start by thanking Dazni and for coming down here and make a presentation before the common council regarding their water and sewer connection. They are located on 17M, the Mid Hudson Psychiatric Center. They are building a brand-new facility, $300 million, the state is investing in it, because, you know, creating or keeping about 550 jobs locally in here. City is very excited, and we're very happy, like the mayor stated during the meeting and the council, their support for the project and providing water and sewer services for this campus, as the state does not want to be in the water and sewer business. So we're happy to accommodate them and encourage that project to move forward, and hopefully to provide additional growth, commercial growth, like the mayor stated in the agreement between us and the county along 17M. So this is an excellent project, and it's just going to be the beginning, I think, for, for the growth for 17M. The traffic operation, as you can see, the, the project has almost died down because of the weather, and will resume hopefully in February, weather permitting. And there's still some minor work that's taking place by the contractor for the traffic operations in downtown and putting up, no parking signs and no standing here to corner and so on and so forth. They're just catching up, boys, the general contractor. Otherwise, the project is moving along very well. You approved awarding the contracts for rebuilding, not rebuilding, for addressing deficiency issues at Shuangang Dams, which are three dams. The contractor has been working with us back and forth for the insurance, and so that we can sign the contract and the construction can get started, and the same for Kench Reservoir. There is one dam in there that's going to be upgraded and, and rebuilt. And that's all I have for tonight, if you have any questions for me.
Any question for Jacob? All right, thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
City Treasurer?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I have in front of you a resolution to pass tonight. The city would like to offer a dual option with night shift health insurance plan. This is something new for this year. The plan will be self-insured under the city. The resolution is to allow claim doc services to administer the plan, and what they will do is administer the claims, help with the enrollment process, educate eligible employees for the plan, and also what they specializes is reference-based pricing, meaning that they will go back to the providers and not necessarily pay an in-network price or out-of-network price, but pay the actual cost of the services provided by the providers. Right now, we do have the PBA bargaining unit that has approved for us to offer this plan. CSDA is now pending. And that's all I have for today. Any questions?
Any questions for the city treasurer? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Police Chief?
Good evening. So the last couple weeks since we met, we've had some alarming activity throughout the city with some of the shots fired incidents. I have briefed most of you on that, some of you, I've had either follow-up conversation in person, telephone, or by text. It's alarming to me, this is alarming to you, it's alarming to our community. We have some challenges. I can't sit here and tell you why these are happening. I could tell you that we are working diligently, we're using resources that we have available to us both locally and through our law enforcement partners. Some of the challenges that I'll share with you, I can't share the tactics or where we are as far as the investigations. We don't have specific victims in these. It's not like we have someone coming forward and saying, hey, this is what was done to me. We have presumed victims that are not 100% cooperative at this point, so that creates a challenge in and of itself. So a lot of that legwork is being done through technology, through, you know, the support of our community residents that are providing us some digital evidence, which I greatly appreciate their, their support and their willingness to do such. It's been very, very helpful. We are treating this just as we would treat a homicide. We put all of our resources into it, we don't put it on the back burner, this is on the front burner. These are very, very important to us, and we are doing our due diligence day in and day out. They follow up every day, I get a briefing every day of where we are, leads that have been developed, status, who we're looking at. Throughout the process, we have made some arrests, they're not connected directly to the incidents, but they were people that may or may not have been involved indirectly. Our, our goal was to maybe garner some information from those people to further our investigation. So we are trying to turn every stone, we're looking for, you know, support from the community. We encourage members of the community, if they have anything, if they believe they may have some information, some knowledge, a piece of video, anything of that, it helps us build our puzzle, as I've shared with you in the past. We build this by little puzzle pieces, and our goal is to come up with a, a picture at the end, and that's what we would present for charges. So it is something we take very serious, we are working, the men and women are working, not just our detectives, the patrol officers that are out there day in and day out, and they are trying to do what they can by making arrests, finding information. I've also put out some additional details over, we started last week, to put out additional resources on the street, to one, be out there to combat it, but also to try to garner some information as well, follow-up on tips. With that, I have nothing else unless you have questions for me. If you would like to discuss this in more detail, I am open, I can give you very specifics, but in private, I can give you some additional information if you so desire.
Any question for the police chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome Hector Mapes, our newest full-time employee to the Parks Department. He started He started January 1st. He's a great addition. He comes with many valuable skills and knowledge and capabilities, so he's definitely a great addition to our Parks Department. Updated on our maintenance department, there have been several trees down on the reservoir trails, so they're working to get those removed, especially the ones that are crossing active trails right now. They are power washing with that big steamer machine that we have from COVID, the locker rooms at War Memorial Pool. There's years and years of worth of paint built up in those locker rooms, so they are in the process of power washing that out now. So when the weather breaks in early spring, they can do a new resurfacing paint job on there. Hopefully, that's not going to chip as easily because we're getting all those layers and layers and years and years of paint off. The bathroom stalls were installed at Wool Slayer Field. And they're also doing constant resurfacing and upkeeping of the ice rink during the week, and then on the weekends as well, wood filling the barrel so it can be resurfaced by the skate staff during the weekends. The recreation department, if you checked out our site, our winter programming is up. Are new to us now, we're doing boxing clinics, along with, we still have our regular Monday through Friday boxing class that you register and pay the monthly fee. But we're now adding clinics, just for another introduction and use of our great boxing facility that we have. Indoor soccer, basketball clinics, crochet, cheerleading clinics, martial arts. And we do have our spring, two spring programs up, the spring program when the kids have no school that week, that registration is up as long, along with our breakdancing. We still do have our free programming going on for the teen and youth, our open gym, our teen boxing, storytime come alive, and the youth fitness. I'd like to say that we were awarded funding for 2023 by the Orange County Youth Bureau. We just got notice. We're going to get $10,000 towards our summer playground lunch program and $28,820 towards our free recreational fitness programs. It's definitely a major help by getting reimbursed for these free programs that are very well attended throughout the year. The dog park, we are having another event there for Valentine's Day. Nicole did come up with a clever name, and that will be out soon, that event with the dog park and a whole kissing booth. Ice rink, if you've gone by on the weekends, it's been very busy, very active. Our Saturdays, we started some themed Saturdays there with different decades of music and glow parties. This past Saturday was a rock and roll Saturday, so we played the theme music along with it. We also added a senior skate and just an adult skate during the week. That was very, that was not too well-attended, but it was asked a lot, so we're hoping that those numbers pick up so we can keep that going into February. We also keep an eye out for Cops and Coco, an event that we're going to have at the ice skating rink. The chief said he's going to be out there ice skating. He used to be a professional figure skater back in the day, so keep an eye out for that.
Just my shoes.
Salvation Army is also interested in joining with us and doing a hot cocoa night down at the ice skating rink. And also, we're in the process of working with community development for a winter festival at the ice skating rink. Any questions? Yes.
Alderman Tobin?
I just made one, one suggestion. I know we have a no smoking sign on the other side of the rink, but there was someone smoking like right next to the picnic tables. When I was there, and it was just getting all over the place, maybe a temporary sign.
Absolutely. Yep. We'll look into their placements and where they're at.
I went down there, the kids had a great time. There was all these kids, they were loving skating with their parents. In fact, a friend of mine I work with, he grew up here, he sometimes go to ice time with his kids. It cost him over 50 bucks. He came over here to visit his parents, and they went out for a few dollars and enjoyed some good family time, you know, so that was very good. And I was just curious, as a neighbor of the Academy Ave Park, I noticed the pavilion was taken down.
Mm-hmm.
I was driving by the other day. Not that I'm in favor of replacing it, I was just wondering, is there a plan to replace it or just?
They are, they're going to build, if you've seen, Maple Hill has it, Davage Park has it, the single pavilions that just have one picnic table.
Okay.
And that was there, it was just a gazebo that was really close to the road and was never used for anything. I believe it was for the bicentennial parade that it was put up years and years ago. So it was falling apart and was only used for things that it shouldn't be used for, so it was taken down. But it, something is going to be replaced by summer for our summer lunch program.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Good evening, Ray Lynn.
Good evening.
I had a constituent question, asked if Wool Slayer Field, the track, is that going to be available for any public use, because it's, it's always locked, so.
Yeah, once, we're waiting for our fencing to get put up around the track. So once the fencing is up and we can, we don't want people going, especially with the snow, like snowmobiles or four-wheelers and tearing up the track. So once we get the fencing up and prohibit anything larger than bodies going through the gate to get onto the track, then it will be open to public, yes.
Okay. And also more pickleball discussions, so I know we're waiting for information on possibility of doing pickleball, pickleball courts, but I just want to keep that fresh in our minds.
Yes, yep.
It seems to be quite popular.
Yes, it is very popular, and I know it is hard.
You don't like sharing tennis courts?
Yes, the tennis players don't want to share with the pickleball, pickleball doesn't want to share with tennis. So we are looking for an alternate spot to have them play, even if it's just with temporary netting that can be like put out and taken away.
Right.
So we are definitely looking into it.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Ray Lynn. City Clerk?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Any question for the city clerk? All right. Public hearings and grievances.
Good evening. We have a public hearing this evening. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, on or as near as 7:30 PM as possible, Common Council Chambers, Second Floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 475 to allow two-family dwellings in OR2, two-family owner-occupied residential districts, which are zoning districts, to permanently be non-owner occupied if the dwelling was occupied as a two-family dwelling at the time this zoning district was created. Any persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed zoning amendment. The complete proposed zoning amendment is available in the office of the Common Council Clerk, 16 James Street, or on the city website. The public hearing will be conducted in person and via video teleconference and live on Channel 20. Any person unable to participate at the time of the public hearing can email comments, may be submitted in advance to rmcormick@middletown-ny.com by order of the common council, Richard McCormick, Clerk of the Common Council.
At this time, the public hearing is now open to the public. Any member would like to speak? Any board member? Your Alderman. I got a motion to close.
So moved.
Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Witt. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Remarks of Alderman. Alderman Witt?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Green?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just, Mayor, my condolences to you and your family on your loss. You know, please pass that along to everyone. Congratulations to our Super Bowl champions. It's always wonderful when you can see our youth coming in here doing some amazing things and to go undefeated and win the Super Bowl, and many of those kids' first year, that's, that's just quite the achievement. And just a reminder that we're not going to have our constituents' meeting for February. We are going to pass because even though it seems to be 60 degrees some of these days, there's still a real possibility of some snow and ice in the future. So we will meet again on, on March 13th here in the council chamber. So thank you very much.
Okay. Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I want to thank the YMCA and the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council. They held a Martin Luther King event on Sunday at the YMCA annex. And usually, James Rollins, Bishop Rollins, would be hosting the event, but he had a death in the family. My condolences to him. But it was a very nice presentation, and so many of the kids got up and before they did their poetry or played their music, they said, I am living the dream. So it, it made it very real to them, and it was a very nice event. The warming station still needs a bunch of two-hour volunteers, and if you can do it, this is from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM, just to help serve food and such. And it's not an overnight thing. So again, that's middletownwarmingstation.com. I want to also make sure people do save the date, April 22nd. It's Saturday, April 22nd, that is going to be our city spring cleanup event. So we, hopefully, it won't conflict with anything like Little League parades or school events or such, so we keep trying to get that date out early enough so people understand it and people save it. Also, I want to send my condolences to the mayor's family for Charles Clark. Also, my neighbor, Dr. Perita, passed away yesterday. He's just a longtime volunteer of medical help around the world, so he will be missed. And our opponent in one of our elections, Joe Finner, and his dad, Mr. Stack, passed away. We're all familiar with Mr. Stack. He was quite a character, but he, he will be missed too. So my condolences to all, and thank you.
Alderman Ray?
Good evening. Mayor, my condolences to your family. I'm sorry for your loss. For our midi football, a lot of those kids tonight were my students that I see at school, and they're always wearing their jerseys in the building. They're a great team. They're just, I think they're, they're youth in our town, if you take a good look at them, always make us very proud. And I love moments like these when we get to kind of highlight that for everyone. And I just want to say congratulations to them and thank you to the coaches, because I know those are all volunteers giving up a lot of their time and the, the team moms and things like that. It's a big job, and it really does take a village, but great work to all of them. I just want to apologize to everyone in this room in advance for my change of name. I've returned to my maiden name, for anyone who wants to know why everyone's calling me Alderman Ray. But it'll take some time, but I think we'll get used to it. That's really all I have for this evening. As relates to our talk tonight about the, the Maple Hill Park and what we're doing with the pool, I'd just say to our constituents, we will be gathering some answers from everyone in our ward that we can gather from the neighborhood and try to, you know, get some ideas to bring back to rec and see what we can do. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Johnson?
Alderman Ray, I'm already in, so we're good. We're good with that. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to hear about that. I know it was a long week. In regards to Linda as well. Nothing else. Thank you.
Alderman Jean Francois?
Good evening, Mayor. My condolences to you and your family. And this evening, DPW committee met this evening. We had a representative from Disney, members of the DASNY members. This is a very exciting project for the city and the regions to provide water and sewer services to the area. This is going to be pretty big. I'm looking forward for that project to start. Can't wait. And also, congratulations to the, to the Midees, D1 football team for winning the Super Bowl. I've seen these kids coming up here, it reminds me how times is so, goes so fast, because I remember my two boys started playing youth football, and, and that kind of brings a lot of memory, almost brings tears to my eyes as times went so fast, you know, I miss that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tobin?
Yes. My condolences to the mayor. I'm sorry for your loss. Yeah, congratulations to the Midee champs. That's great to see. And I think I saw a lot of them at the Midee Bowl game, too. So we're from the youth all the way up. You know, Middletown's fully engaged in our youth, and it shows. And also, while sports, Steven Monchery, congratulations to him. He won the prestigious Eastern States Wrestling Classic as a coach and a referee. That's one of the toughest tournaments in our region. A lot of future NCAA champs come out of that tournament, like they move on to, I've even seen Olympic champs wrestle there. So it's really a tough tournament, and that he placed one and first. I think he knocked off the number one seeded person in the state already going, you know, and the season's not over. So congratulations to the Middletown team, had a number of place finishers. I think there's a female wrestling team now, so they're, and they had a whole female tournament. So it's a, it's a sport that's on the rise, so, and I'd like to congratulate them for all the hard work they're doing. And then I just wanted to let everybody know the reason, I figured out the reason why we're having a late winter is because I bought a snow blower this year. I haven't been able to use it once. But, so, maybe it'll continue. Thank you.
All right. New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt appointing members of the Industrial Development Agency.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Row.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, reappointing Free and Emilio to the Board of Assessment Review.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Row.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, reappointing members of the Electrical Licensing Board.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Row.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing a proposal from H2O to renew contracts for services at the water and wastewater treatment plants.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Row.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, awarding bids for surplus vehicles.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Row.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing an agreement with Claim Doc Services to administer the city's employer-sponsored employee health benefit plan.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Whit, authorizing an agreement with Claim Doc Services to administer the city's employer-sponsored employee health benefit plan.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Whit, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing a sale and compensating used tax-sharing agreement with the county of Orange.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, authorizing an application for round seven Restore New York Funds for the ONW Building Restoration Project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, authorizing a street closure for the Winter Festival.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing an amendment to City Code, chapter four seventy-five zoning.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?